Hello, good evening everyone, thank you for being here. I called the six o'clock regular school board meeting to order. Um, pledge of allegiance, Dr. Salazar, will you lead us in that? Will everyone please remain standing for a moment of silence? Thank you. Moving on in the agenda, we're going to Roman numeral four, roll call. Mr. Castillo, will you call row fours, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Sandra Garcia is not here. Mr. Ruben Trevino?
Present.
I am here, Martin Castillo. Ms. Letizia Quintero?
Present.
Mr. Jesús Amaya?
Present.
Mr. Donald Henderson?
Present.
Dr. Gonzalo Salazar?
Present.
Ms. Elizabeth Neely?
Thank you. Uh, moving ahead, uh, Roman numeral five, district presentations.
Mr. Trevino, members of board, we, uh, thank you for the opportunity to present this, uh, to make these two presentations, uh, before you. Um, some time ago, the, the board awarded Noble Builders a contract to build our newest middle school. Uh, since then, we've been working closely with Mr. Rene Capistran and his team, uh, to not just build the school, but opportunity, uh, for teachers and students to, to be exposed to meaningful learning experiences. So this evening, we are pleased to introduce Mr. Rene Capistran, uh, and his team from Noble Builders, from Texas A&amp;M University. Dr. Escamilla, from Texas Workforce Commiss- Commission, Chairman Brian Daniel, from Cameron County, our county commissioner, Mr. David Garza. And then, um, we will also introduce you to interns and teachers, our teachers, Mr. Gil Gomez, Misty Eredia, and Joel Montemayor. And Sir Mario Losoya of Noble Builders Team, Mario?
Appreciate it, thank you, appreciate that opportunity, extremely board members. Uh, we are happy to present to you, uh, an, an effort that we've been honored to take part with, with, uh, your superintendent, Dr. Gonzalez, who in my opinion is a, is a true vis- true visionary and a thought leader. Thank you for your leadership, sir. So, a few months back, we thought that we, as, as a company, we'd engage in what we call a committee engagement to help support the, the workforce pipeline, not only for the company, but to create a model that we can later share with other industries across, uh, the, the county and across the community, maybe even across Texas. And so, one of the many items that we want to engage is, engage in was, uh, student internship and teacher externship. So when we visited Dr. Gonzalo, uh, Salazar, we, we together agreed on, on engaging in a partnership to do that, right? So, we've done that, we've, we've gone through the process and we've done that. And what I want to do is quickly go through the presentation of what, what we did and, and hear from some of the people that were involved to, to share with you some of their words and, and experiences. Uh, so, our intent was to, obviously to inspire hope, improve lives, and strengthen the communities in which we live in, and we think that Noble Texas Builders is doing just that specifically with this particular program. Finding a way to have relat- relevant partnerships than we have with your school district. Um, career, uh, focus on career readiness, workforce development, teacher development, and together improve our community. We identified this particular issue, so when red, uh, typically red means no good. In this case, we want to say red is the area we want to highlight and really focus in, right? So, from the school district perspective, what can we do on a teacher standpoint, and what can we do on a student standpoint? From a workforce perspective, what are we doing to prepare a ready-to-work workforce together? And from an industry perspective, are we working in a relevant way to get ready-to-work workforce and the like? So, you can read the comment, I won't read all of it to you, but essentially is how can we, how we create this process and it essentially, eventually then scaled it to other industries to create the relevant workforce of tomorrow. And I think what we did was just a, a model that we can later scale to other industries, right? And so what we did is we engaged in a teacher externship, like we said, and we touched a lot of relevant subjects. And in my opinion, I've been involved with many of these, and, um, it was very rigorous, and you'll hear from, uh, one of your teachers, uh, what we did. To include what is the school district's role in economic development, in workforce development. We learned about, uh, different compliance standards from a, from a industry perspective, leadership structure, how we do project management. They went to job sites and learned what a job site's like. So they were very, very busy, very intense. And the students, the same, did a lot of, of work, uh, in their internship. We didn't want to have a student just sit in the corner and file paperwork, we wanted to get involved, just like the rest of the team. And we treat them just like a regular team member. And by the way, both teachers and students were paid with pay time for them. So here, here's an example, uh, our students who are out there taking pictures and helping us with our social media postings, and you can see some of their comments. Uh, Diego is one of them, says, uh, while at the project of Izalabanca, we had, we had him, uh, work at the project. Glad to be in this internship program by, by Nobles and spend this time learning to become better. Uh, you can see the comment from the young ladies there, glad to enter this new experience and, uh, taking an internship with Noble, a very, uh, very, uh, punitive and, and welcoming environment to work in. Um, we also had some, uh, teachers involved, and, but before, before I, before I, uh, I, I go with the teachers, I wanted to tell you that we thought that our student corps that we, we brought along were, we were very impressed. You really have a student corps that's very impressive, and I would say that just basically through your leadership, we think that you're providing a really good, um, student experience, which is what we want. We want to help you in that, and how do we mitigate the gap between what you're teaching and what we, and what we want them to learn, and that's what we're doing. And, um, to the point that we wanted to make a, a special recognition, if we, if I can ask, uh, the CEO and president, Mr. Capitán, to come up and do that. One of our students, uh, was Agleire Rodriguez, is he here? You'll come up, please?
Thank you, Mario. I always love when you walk in and you don't know you're supposed to speak, so, but at this time around, it's really important, because we're always looking for ways to build on the career pathway, right? Everybody talks career pathway, but we really want to get to the point where the rubber meets the road. So as, I will echo what Mario said a little while ago, we were very impressed by the students, a- as well as the teachers. But really, the aspect of the students, how well they engaged, they were very quick, very smart, so much so that we're here to, today, and this young student's not aware of this, but, uh, we kind of forced to let her go. We take all of them, but they're still in high school. This young lady is starting first year at TSE, so tonight, we're actually making her a job offer to come work for us, part-time, as long, there's a caveat, she has to stay in school. This partnership's in place until she graduates. When she graduates, she will start a minimum salary of sixty thousand. So today, we hope, we hope you accept our job offer, and I hope you had a meaningful experience. So, let, let me get on one knee here, go ahead, man.
Hello, good afternoon, my name is Agleire Rodriguez, and it is a privilege, um, for me during, during my summer, working with Rene Capistran. Um, this is a program that it will definitely help, you know, the future students, you know, five steps ahead, um, and there with the real-world, um, professionals and with real-world problems. And it's different perspectives, um, compared to, you know, just being, you know, at, in the class and, um, learning from the teachers while also, you know, being hands-on and it completely, I bet, then future students, you know, having this opportunity will be grateful. Thank you so much.
I, 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 I don't know if I can add to that, but, uh, really, our commitment is, uh, you know, we don't, we don't want, just want to talk the talk, we're going to walk the walk and put our money where the money is. We're going to partner with, 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 uh, with the students and teachers, we want to make it work right in, and, and we think that we're going to be on the winning end of it in the end. So we also have some teachers, and I showed you earlier, uh, what kind of, of items that were involved in a curriculum. In my opinion, it was a little rigorous, I don't think they're used to doing something like that.
If you offer them a job, we may not be frightened.
I think we were all thinking the same thing.
We're not, we're not, we need them, we need them here to produce a pipeline like Mrs. Rodriguez, we need them to produce more of those. But, uh, I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. Gil Gomez, who is your engineering instructor and teacher, to come and give, share with us his experience.
Well, I had to write mine down, because I didn't really know how much time I had to talk, so, um, so, everyone here, um, welcome. And I would want to say my, my greatest appreciation to the whole, uh, enterprise of the Los Frenos CISD and Noble team, um, for allowing me to have the opportunity to experience this partnership that we have. I'm thankful and blessed to have been a part of this endeavor. And before I begin, I would be remiss to, that I didn't mention my colleagues here tonight who were part of this journey, and I know we've mentioned tonight, but we have Miss, Misty Eredia and Mr. Joel Montemayor. We had many good exchanges amongst ourselves, getting to know each other, and it was just a great experience, and I, I really enjoyed it, uh, with you guys. Uh, so moving on, we were received with an open arms from, again, uh, Texas Noble Builders, beginning with Mr. Capistran, and his core value of maintaining transparency. That's what he said from the very get-go. So, as we went along this journey, everywhere we went, it was transparent to all of us. Anything we needed to know, anything we needed to learn, any question we asked was, was received and answered with energy and enthusiasm. The passion and energy was visible from administration to boots at the worksite. All were available to enlighten us on their day-to-day business and answer any questions they might have. We had the opportunity to witness the building construction, um, operates, that, where operates in real, in a real-time environment. As Mr. Losoya put us, as he was teaching us along the way, we invested in the word, the Japanese word, genchi, which fundamentally mean, fundamentally means, if you want to know about it, go experience it. So that's what we did. We visited a construction at the Rancho Vero de Middle School, a day when eight hundred cubic yards of concrete were being poured for the gymnasium as, as part of those five components of that, uh, uh, middle school that we're building out there. Um, the next time, the next day, we went to the far end of the valley, we went to a McDonald's restaurant, which, which is in its final weeks of construction, and then we finally went to Izalabanca at South Padre Allen, where we engaged in a great conversation about how do you put buildings and build buildings on sand? So we had a great discussion on piers, and for those of you who don't know, uh, most structures that are out there, they're on pilings that go down fifty to sixty to eighty feet down. So, uh, it was amazing that conversation that we had, and, uh, it involves geotechnical engineers to go out there and study the soils and find out what you have to do to make it so that it's not going to be the leaning tower of pizza number two. Uh, we also witnessed a, um, a, a day in the, uh, and I'm going to call it their war room, when they were bidding, they had a three o'clock deadline, it had to happen, they had to submit for a, a very, uh, big project here in the valley. It, uh, and as, uh, Mr. Montemayor mentioned, it was like the NFL draft. There was conversations going on, they were, uh, changing numbers, there was a man with a spreadsheet, and he was changing numbers, and it would, they had to, they wanted to stay within a certain number, and it, and we were just sitting there, looking at each other, saying, they're so cool about it, how can they be with all this intensity that is going on? But sure enough, at three fifty-nine, they, uh, two fifty-nine, they submitted that bid, and within minutes, they were advised that they were the winners of that contract, okay? A little bit overbid because of the, the way everything is in the market is right now, but they, they did win. It was a great experience for us to see that all happen. Um, so this experience afforded us an opportunity to visualize, uh, how we as educators might help to close the gap in engineering, uh, enlightening our students to careers that are visible, productive, and rewarding in the growing industry of building construction. In this industry, professionals are needed at every level, from the earthwork to the finish work, many trades are involved. In today's fast-moving world and the environment we've been thrust into, especially with COVID in our midst, we have come to realize a gap between what our students may not know and what industry is looking for and needing. Unfortunate to say, we are in a reactive mode right now towards getting qualified people into this workforce. So I come today to advocate for a continuation of the extern, externship program as we go forward. We, as a school district, have an opportunity to be proactive and impact the students we touch. At the end of the school year, me personally, as a teacher, as an educator here in Los Frenos, will have an opportunity to enlighten two hundred students in my classroom, okay? If I can touch with them what I experienced and tell them, and give them more visibility as to what is out there, and you multiply that by two more teachers, we can reach six hundred students, call it five hundred. With a population of enrollment of thirty-five hundred in our district, we're at fifteen percent basically touching upon students who now have a broader view of what's available out there in the market. And that's just the start. I, we, we have agreed that we need to, uh, expand this out into other disciplines in our, in our, in our school district, uh, areas such as medical field, um, law enforcement, the service sector, just to name a few. Um, and so, as, uh, we should consider these externships into other areas, like I mentioned. I close by thanking everyone for their time, and I truly look forward to the upcoming school year. Oh, and I forgot to mention one thing. I already have in my lesson plans, a very, uh, illicit engagements that I want to have with Noble, uh, and they were right off the bat, if you need anything, let us know. So, we have our middle school in the construction right now, it's, it's going to take the whole school year, so we have many opportunities to take students out there to, to see what's going on. And, and Matt, where are you, Matt? That guy was awesome with us, on our, on our, uh, walks through the, through the site, telling us all about what was going on. Uh, and then we also had, and she's not here tonight, but Valeria, I don't know her last name, what's Valeria's last name? Vega, she's a female engineer from Rio Grande City, if I'm not mistaken, uh, from the valley, and she was fantastic also. And by the way, uh, one of my problems that, uh, we had to solve a problem, and one of my problems is how do we get more females into the engineering program? So I have a list, a little laundry list of what I'd like to try to do to entertain them, because I really do, I try to endorse and, and ask, we need more women engineers, because guys, they have ideas, right? Blow us away, okay? So I, I just close by thanking everyone, and I truly look forward to working with, uh, Noble over the coming years, as we move forward. Thank you so much.
So here is an example of the students that we had, you can see four of them, were from Los Frenos, uh, happy to have them on and hope, uh, to continue hearing about the great success that they have. During this time, also, the teachers had some time to go visit, for example, in the middle, Mr. Mark Mylin from, from, um, from Los Frenos, the city manager, who also oversees economic development. So they had an in-depth course of how the school district and the city work in an economic development space for the greater good, right? So the teachers got, uh, uh, some, some, um, information about it. Uh, Mr. Pat Hobson, Workforce Solutions, regarding workforce and workforce development, right? And also with Mr. Joey Trevino from the, from the General Contract Association, of what in the greater scope of things, how, uh, does workforce fit in that space, right? So all this to say is that this is what we want to do, is it takes a village, right, to, to expose, uh, our students and our teachers to what is it that the community requires, so we can work together so that we can improve our economy or, or, or our communities in, in a bigger and a greater way. So, we also invited your, your county commissioner, person three, Commissioner David Garza, he's a champion of education, and I'm not going to step on his toes, I want to go to say, he is truly, uh, your supporter, and he's, he's your big fan, and, and I'd like to ask him to come up, sir, for your comments.
First of all, it's a pleasure to be with you here this afternoon and spend a few minutes with distinguished guys, and especially the audience over there, with the kids and the teachers that are sitting before us. It's, I've, I've had a pleasure, from the county commissioner perspective, to deal with Noble and work with Noble on many projects, and they keep coming back and doing work for us. And all of these projects, you know, I, I tell my fellow commissioners and judges, you know, in the matrix of how we evaluate the folks that do work for us, we have to add another, please, Elizabeth, or where's Elizabeth? Over here, you know, I says, in that matrix, you know, we look at price, and we look at, you know, how long they've been around, and how many jobs have, and all these things. And, and I'm aside from what I'm saying, but I think we need a matrix, that what are they doing and how are they helping our community? We bring folks from Dallas or Houston, and they come and go, and then we never see them again, and the problems linger on, in our case, for years sometimes. So, I'll get off that soapbox, but just a thought for you guys, you know? Look at the matrix as, as how you evaluate who does work for your district, and, and make sure that they're willing to invest in our communities. You know, it's really a pleasure to come here and hear about the program that you all experienced with the students and the teachers and with, you know, Noble. You know, we've, I've seen it already in, in, uh, Puerto Isabel, in the district, in the ecotourism center, where we had the university bring students over as the process was going on, so that they could learn about each step of the way, you know, some of the things that you saw on the screen, and it opens their eyes to many opportunities. Most importantly, it gives them a little touch of reality of what they could actually be doing, and sometimes, that doesn't involve investing in four years of college immediately, because resources are limited, they don't want to leave town, there's other mitigating factors in their lives that doesn't allow it to happen. Well, with these type of programming and initiatives, these kids can stay here, and one of them tonight got a job offer, I don't know if she took it or not, you know? But, you know, what a better place to learn, train, and develop your career path with. And then, I know that Dr. Escamilla here, so, where I, back there in the back, you know, he's got a fantastic program locally that our kids can benefit from. We cannot, in Cameron County, find the licensing requirements for a building inspector that we need today. We're dealing with issues, not only inspecting Noble's work, but we're inspecting SpaceX, we're inspecting LNG facilities coming on board, bringing us plans to look at and approve or disapprove, and we don't have those folks in our area that can do it. They come, three months later, they get a job offer for ten thousand dollars more somewhere else, and they're gone, you know? There's no commitment. You train young people here locally, they're going to stay here, their families are here, we live here, this is the best place in the United States to live, you know? I mean, look at the amenities that exist around us, look at the school system such as yours, that folks can partici- participate with and get involved with, you know? Career path opportunities, you know, is the key. On-the-job training, and I was visiting with someone before the meeting, I used to serve on a Cameron County Private District Council thirty-five years ago, and I know that some of us don't like to age, but you still look the same, Elizabeth, you know? But we, we were, we were doing things back then, investing with federal and state dollars to train kids on the job training type programs. Extremely successful, they were so successful that they were done away with, that's how successful they were. Then they moved those dollars into babysitting services, and I was a big opponent of it. I wanted to see on-the-job training. On-the-job training meant that these kids got exposed, got interested, internalized a desire to do something that they had never even thought about, and that's what this opportunity with Noble offers these folks. If you guys can make the curriculum, such as what you already said, Mr. Gomez, relevant to the kids, they'll be there. You build it, they will come, I promise you, you know? There's, there's pathways to the workforces that are limitless, limitless. What we can think, we can do, if we put our resources to it. You know, I've had the pleasure of having been a school board member, and it was a fantastic experience. What you guys do sometimes seems kind of routine, and you know, I mean, they're, you know, we meet and do, but there's opportunities. We just got to think outside the box. We got to, Dr. Escamilla tells me he wants, he's going to be happy when he has twenty-five slots, and I says, okay, what's going to, what are you going to do for the rest of the state? These type of, these type of internships and opportunities to develop the kind of workforce that we need is far exceeds twenty-five kids. I extended an invitation to him to, and I extended to you guys, and I will follow up with you, Gonzalo. Uh, and I'm sure Mr. Daniels probably has been to Bryan College Station, their career academy. They have a place over there that is phenomenal for kids to get into first jobs and go through career paths that will make them productive, successful citizens of their communities. And I will get that information, I already invited Rene Capistran to go visit over there. I, I don't believe in reinventing wheels, I believe in borrowing spare tires, you know? They got it, we'll use it, you know? So, you know, just rest assured that from the county perspective, we're here to help, we want to help, we, we, we want to be partners with everyone. We're partners, and, and choose, choose who works in your districts carefully. You got fantastic people, you need fantastic third-party suppliers for you. So, that's a challenge, uh, again, congratulations to all involved for thinking outside the box. You know, it's, it's, it's great to be around folks that want to do that, and I know all of your board members, man, they're great people. You know, you put the right ideas and give them good rationale as to why they will work, they're going to support our kids, and our kids are our future. So, thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity, God bless you, and we're here to help.
So, uh, Commissioner Brian Daniel, he's the chairman of Texas Workforce Commission, I've had the privilege of, have worked with him for many years. I, I was an executive with Toyota North America, you've probably heard of the company Toyota. And at the time, Mr. Daniel was the executive director of Economic Development in the governor's office in Austin, and since then, he's recently moved over to Workforce Commission, now he's the chairman. And I don't think there's anyone in Texas that knows more about how the school districts fit in the overall economic development of things, and, and I think he's the one that, that, that can encapsulate all of this, uh, in, in his experience. And we're happy to have him here today to share with us, uh, his thoughts of how programs like this and parks like this are, are essential in the state of Texas. Chairman?
Thank you, thank you so much for giving me just a little bit of time. You know, I, we hear a lot of good ideas of things that are going on around the state, and I, I think too many times, we stay in Austin and try to think that the answers are just going to come to us. When I hear a good idea, I go out and, and see what's going on with that. I heard about this internship and teacher externship program, really just a few weeks ago, and, and then I found out from Mario that there was an opportunity to learn more about it tonight, and so, I'm learning while you are and participating, and then I'm going to tell you a couple of things on why I think this is a model for the rest of the state. You see, uh, and we, we have more people working in payroll jobs in Texas today than we've ever had in the history of the state. At the same time, we have seven hundred thousand open jobs in this state. And so, our payroll jobs are growing, our workforce is growing, the total civilian workforce in the state continues to grow month over month over month, but the number of jobs that employers are creating continue to grow along with it. And so we've got some opportunities here. Challenge maybe, but really, it looks more like an opportunity. Now I'll tell you what I've found out, there are a lot of construction companies in this state, a lot of very good, uh, big, growing construction companies. Generally, the way they solve their workforce problem is to look at their competition and decide which of their employees would be better at their construction company, and then they go get them. I saw your face when Mario was handing out jobs and then started talking about teachers, I understand what that conversation is like, happens to us at the Workforce Commission too. But you, I don't think Noble did that, I, I think they saw an opportunity to continue to invest in their community, but more importantly, continue to make the kinds of, uh, investments in the company that are going to give significant returns. And it would appear to me that based on this particular program, they've found a formula that lets them grow their company, at the same time, they can grow their community. And I, you know, that kind of corporate citizenship, we, we really kind of draw that up and hope that corporations do that, and here we have a corporation who's actually doing it. I think something that works particularly well in this program is, is students do an internship and they learn something from it. It's the teacher externship portion that I think intrigues me the most. At most, we could have a couple hundred students interning, uh, but one teacher's going to teach hundreds of students this school year and the next school years to come, and I think that's our best bet for letting students know about the opportunities that are out there. I talked about the fourteen million people in the workforce, but what I didn't tell you is this, in Texas, about a third of the jobs in this state require a college degree. As it happens, we produce about thirty-three percent of Texans with a college degree each year. About eight percent of the jobs in this state really don't require any training after high school whatsoever, and about twenty-four percent of Texans have exactly those qualifications, no training after high school whatsoever. Fifty-five, fifty-four, fifty-five percent of the jobs in this state are what we would call middle skill- call middle-skills jobs. I mean, they, they have some training after high school, but you don't actually have to have a college degree to be able to do that job. And only about thirty-five percent of Texans have those skills. Now, if you do all that math, and it's a lot of math, but if you do all that math, what you'll find is, is that in, in the statistical world, we call that a delta. And it means we've got a lot of folks who need some training after high school, and we've got jobs waiting on them. This partnership between Noble, Los Fresnos, and, and the community gives us an opportunity for people to get that training, getting a better job, more income for their family, more opportunities for their community. And it lets them take advantage of the economic growth that we continue to see in the state. And so, I, I really, I just wanted to come today and say, this is such a great project. And if you don't mind, I'm gonna talk about it, and I'm gonna talk about you. And I'm gonna talk about the innovative things that we're seeing and how we're growing communities and companies, we're benefiting students, and we're really making sure that everyone gets to participate in the economic development here in the state of Texas. One of my jobs as a Workforce Commissioner is finding those good ideas and then scaling them up to be a statewide project. We're watching this one. I think it has so much promise for us to be able to scale this up and let other areas of the state take advantage of this as well. But at the end of the day, we can't get past this fact. It takes companies like Noble who are willing to work with the community, and it takes school boards and administration like this one who have the, I, I, the forward-looking, just that talent to look forward and say, this is where we can be, because that's where we wanna be, and this is exactly how you get there. So, thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate all you're doing. Hope you don't mind me talking about you across the state, 'cause I'm gonna be doing that over the next few weeks. Thank you again.
And that concludes our presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? I just have a comment, thank you so very much, uh, Noble Construction, Mr. Capistran, for your efforts, your forward-thinking in how to get this done. Um, it really gets me fired up because i- in our plan, we have career in technology and things that are really going to pair very nicely with some of the things that we're currently doing. So, if you think you've seen something, you ain't seen nothing yet, I can promise you that. So, um, I'm, I'm really, really happy, and thank you all for all your efforts, we appreciate it. Yes, sir.
So, this is, goes to the chairman, right? He made a comment, he's gonna be talking about this program statewide. So, one of the things that I'm gonna challenge him with is, one of the biggest challenges we have in small business or in corporate world is paying our students the internships, right? So, our challenge is, how can we work with them so the state can support us and we can really scale this program up? So, we hope to continue this conversation, Mr. Chairman, 'cause I think that's really what's gonna make the difference in these programs, support from the state to continue to grow this. Thank you.
Great point, thank you. Mr. Henderson?
A comment. Uh, I just wanna thank Commissioner Daniels for coming here today to let us know what you're wanting to do and how you're seeing this program and how productive it's gonna be. Commissioner Garza, especially Mr. Gomez and the teachers, to step up, I know that's extra work for y'all, uh, but you can see, getting a job offer out of high school, uh, amazing. Uh, Mr. Vazoya, Mr. Capistran, thank you very much.
You didn't get to hear his bio, okay? Commissioner Daniel bio. But, Commissioner Daniel, where did you graduate from? Okay, I just wanted, you know, he's not visiting from Austin, he is from here, he's from one of us, and he's been around here many times in trying to help us develop what we can to help our kids. So, you know, he's a local boy, and it means a lot to us to take the time to be here. Thank you so much, as always.
Mr. Trevino, members of the board, we have one more experience to tell you about. Uh, recently went, uh, participated in a, a very first leadership retreat experience. We have several administrators here to share their experience. Um, can you come, can y'all step up, please? We'll begin with Mrs. Rosemary Leal, principal of Almito Elementary School.
Hi, how's it going? We're just waiting for our presentation.
So, today was, as we wait for, uh, tell us about the first day with teachers back.
Oh, my gosh, they were so excited, um, they were ready to come back. Some of them, of course, they wanted to enjoy more time with families, right? But, um, they were ready to come back, they have so many, uh, great ideas for our kids, and, uh, were excited about, you know, planning together as a team. And this year, we had quite a bit of, uh, several new staff members, not new to teaching, but new to our campus. And they were super impressed with how we do things here in Los Fresnos, from curriculum to pu- pickup lines at, after school, and so they were very impressed, and they're so, um, happy that they're part of our district now. So...
Looks like we have technology coming up already.
Yeah. It's just a few pictures of our retreat, um, so, uh, vice, vice, board vice president, Dr. Salasada, members of the board. Um, we just wanted to thank you for your leadership and your support in creating this wonderful opportunity, the Leadership Retreat for us. Um, at, the Leadership Retreat provided us with an opportunity for our teams to reconnect, uh, after a, a period of time that we hadn't, um, done something like this, um, and, or really ever, right, sir? Um, so we're forced...
Away from the district.
Um, but, you know, we would do stuff at the district level, but this afforded us with the time and the opportunity to reconnect, reflect in what the year had, um, had provided for us this past year, and refine our goals so that we can ensure student success for the future. So, thank you so much, and thank you for your leadership.
Good evening, uh, my name is Jennifer Garcia, and I'm the instructional officer at Almito Elementary School. Uh, last year was my first year as instructional officer, and because of COVID, uh, we didn't really have the chance to connect as administrators as often as I've heard in the past it was done. Um, so, the retreat that we went on, it really gave us the opportunity to get to know each other on a more personal level, get to know each other as, as, uh, professionals, and, um, really make that connection, um, because I know that, you know, everybody says, oh, just one call away, but then, okay, what's his name, what's her name? And so, so it really did give us the opportunity to, uh, to make those connections, and it really is, you know, we get to, um, say, okay, if you're in, in, uh, in charge of 504, call me, I'll be there, no problem. Um, so, it, I, I truly, um, appreciate the opportunity for, for us to be able to go together and have that chance to bond and, and, um, really get to know each other a little bit more and make those connections that are, you know, useful throughout the school year. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Good evening, my name is, uh, Elisa Pinada, and I'm the proud new principal over at Los Fresnos United. Um, thank you so much, uh, Dr. Salasada, Dr. Stamba, for taking this to the board, and, uh, school board members, thank you for approving this wonderful retreat. Um, being new to LFU, not new to the district, um, what, it can be overwhelming at times, especially meeting, uh, your new team. We actually had our assistant principal, Ms. Chio, hired two days before the retreat, jumped on the bus with us, and went on the retreat, not knowing anybody that time served us so well. I think Mr. Hall can, can agree, we all just, it felt like family. And not only our team, but everybody else, uh, Ms. Amato and I would get up real early in the morning and go exercise, she was my accountability partner in the morning, and in the afternoons, we would try to go walk, and even though it was a few short days, it felt like it was, I don't know, more than that, and we really all came together as a team. So, thank you so much for believing in us and giving us the time that we needed, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, give me, give me just a minute as we describe the Leadership Retreat. Um, just wanna enter into the record that we went through strategic planning, and a leadership, a leadership definition, uh, over the course of the last year, and then we said, how do we roll that out? Well, the leadership definition, we had HEB, uh, present their leadership definition, uh, to about three of, three of us who, uh, had been attending the Holsworth Center, and thought, wouldn't it be great if we could hear directly from representatives from HEB and then visit HEB? So, our Leadership Retreat was held in Bernie, and when we realized that we had put all of our human capital, all of our leaders, on one chartered bus to travel to San Antonio, we literally decided, we need to pray over this bus and God's protection over this bus, 'cause who will run our school district, God forbid there was an accident. But, the bonding that took place was something that I don't even think these pictures and these, these images can do, can do justice to ho- uh, the time we spent doing a deep dive into our, our, uh, strategic plan, uh, to setting goals, committing to those goals, not just goals for the implementation of the, uh, goals that resulted from the board's belief statements, but personal growth goals, making a commitment to how we were gonna grow, and then assigning a, a, picking a, a, an accountability partner that would be with you, not just in the morning walks, but throughout the course of this year, ensuring that we each, uh, adhere to the SMART goals that, that we set. Um, I think I should've framed it that way before I turned the mic over. Mr. Hall?
No, I, I appreciate that you, you mentioned all the, you know, all the hard work that we did and the, the collaborative, uh, learning framework and all the different stuff, and then you chose the picture of us dressed like idiots to, to, to say, no, I promise, we did like a whole lot of work. Um, no, I'm, I'm Alex Hall, I'm one of the assistant principals at Los Fresnos United, I'm a member of, uh, Ms. Caneta's new team, I've been there for, for years. Um, I, to be absolutely honest, I was not particularly looking forward to the Leadership Retreat, and I hate to admit that, but I will also admit that I am a man, and I admit when I'm wrong, 'cause I'm wrong all the time. And I was wrong, it was an excellent experience, it was three days, and we were just joking, that it felt like a week, in a great way. In a, this is full of learning, and it's amazing, and there's so much to, to do, and there's a great community that we were, um, that we were developing. And part of that came from honestly breaking bread together, eating occasionally, we had nine meals over four days, and, and that was a really important part of the community building. And one of the points that I made, one of the things that I pointed out was, there's a reason that community and communion have very similar root words, is because that's what it, that's what it takes, and that's where you go. Um, when you have community, you break bread, and, and it's, it's a pretty powerful thing. And I'm very happy to say that I, I look forward to the, the retreat next year, if that's, I've decided that we wanna do that again. Um, so this time, I promise, I'll, I'll espouse the, the benefits of it.
(laughing)
Um, because it wa- it was, it was a great experience, so, thank you very much for allowing...
Mr. Hall, on the, on the image up there, we have Sam Nix of Duncanville, he's a, a deputy superintendent in Duncanville, and his sister, Shereen Nix. Uh, can you talk about what they presented on, the topic they presented on, uh, and help us make some connections? You didn't know I was gonna do this, some...
Yes, they presented the four Ps of leadership, and I'll turn to my, no. Um, performance, politics, um, people, and perceptions. Um, and those were, those two speakers were awesome, those were amazing. Um, those guys were energetic and engaging and, and really interesting. And their framework for leadership, um, just like the HEB, the people from HEB, could easily become the sole, you know, um, kind of...
The content for this...
Yeah, the, the, the sole jumping off point for any leader, you can, you can lean all of your weight on that and then move forward. We were lucky enough to find very different and entirely disparate ways and, and different places to engage and say, this is how, the kind of leader I wanna be, and I'm gonna choose ideas from over here and over here and over here in order to do that. So, that was extremely, tho- them and the, the HEB tour and the HEB speaker were very beneficial.
Chris Wickerham of HEB, uh, actually a former high... Emily. Uh, just created, that's, she's, she's gonna focus on, on creating that path. Security guard that wants to be a police officer, knows exactly what they need to do, what path they need to follow, so yeah, you're right, Chris Wickerham of HEB was incredible. And then we went to visit a store in Bernie where they were walking the walk.
It was excellent, it was, it was in a, a really, really great experience, and I enjoyed all three and a half days of it, and it felt longer, but it was great.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Yep.
How can I follow that? Just kidding. I'm, uh, Dr. Apollonia Renteria, and I'm the new principal at Resaca Middle School. I'm excited to be here with you tonight. Um, just as you heard before, it was an amazing experience. For me, I got hired a week before, and Ms. Amato mentioned to me that we were going to Tapatio Springs, and I said, wha- what's that? And then we even joked about Tapatio, the hot sauce, but I, I wasn't aware, I was in Bernie, I was a little nervous, I had not met anybody. In Los Fresnos, I was hired from out of the district, I had not even met my administration team. So, I pull up that morning, I have my bags, and I'm like, okay, who am I going to sit with? So, I sat there until finally one of my APs showed up, I sat with her. On the way there, I knew a lot about her, probably not everything, but I knew a lot about her, and she knew a lot about me. So, we had the opportunity to bond, she was also my roommate, so we really bonded. Uh, we talked all, all evening, after, after we did all the activities, we talked about what we wanted for the school year. Um, I feel coming as a new administrator and going into that, it was an amazing experience. Not only did I meet all the other administrators like I would if we were here, but I actually got to know them, we actually got to talk, we got to eat, we got to just hang out, and all day felt like we were all engaged, we were all committed to our students. And if it would've been here, what I'm thinking as a new administrator, if we would've had it here, I would've been like, okay, I'm ready to go to my campus, 'cause there's a lot of work to get done. Well, having it there forced us to engage in more of a conversation in what's the learning, uh, that happened during the day. So, it was an amazing experience, I'm very happy that I not only met my team, bonded with them, but also that I connected with the other middle school principals and with the elementary principals. And now I know if I call, okay, I actually know who they are. I'm still trying to learn all the names, but I know the face, and I know that I was with you for three and a half days. So, yes, it was an amazing experience, and I truly, truly think it's very beneficial because we got to, like I said, step away and focus a hundred percent on what we were planning for the school year, and it, it helped a lot.
Dr. Renteria, we implemented something, and, and a lot of the programming that we put together were, uh, ideas and, uh, that we borrowed a used tire, Commissioner. We, we, we borrowed those tires from other, other experiences that we have had, that we, as a, as a leadership team, don't wanna keep to ourselves, we wanna share with, with our principals and assistant principals. And we, we did words of affirmation. Can you talk, can you share quickly words of affirmation, how, how, how we used, uh, those? And then, uh, we closed out with a, with a gratitude circle, would you, would you please talk about that?
Yes, so the, um, on the screen you'll see at the, at the right-hand corner, well, my right, uh, where it says encourager, so we were given, um, three cards, four cards, uh, with different words on them, uh, and we were able to, if we wanted to, uh, give it to somebody in the room, one of the fifty-five leaders that were there, and put a little note in the back on why we felt that they fit in that category. It was very neat, I got one, I was excited, I took it home and I showed it on the Wednesday, I showed it to my family, they were like, cool, right? I was more excited than they were, but it was very, it was very neat, and, um, a part of my leadership team really enjoyed the, the small words. It's something small, small token of the appreciation, and it really goes a long way. Also, we were, um, which other part was it that you asked them to say? Yes, the gratitude circle at the end, it started with, does anybody wanna say a few words? And everybody in the room said, said, uh, words, uh, at the end before we left on why everybody was excited. And a lot of what you heard today from us, uh, leaders, you heard from everybody in that room, everybody was so excited, everybody was enthusiastic about the school year, it really pumped everybody up. And it was, it was just something small, taking us away from the setting and allowing us to fully engage into what the school year is, uh, what we have in front of us for the school year, because there was a lot of learning, a lot of information, but the way that it was broken down and the way that we were there able to group together allowed us to really dive, dive deep into that. So, we're ready to turn it over... So, we're ready to turn it over, I won't get my teachers till Wednesday, which I will say, today when I showed up to the training, they said, "Sit with your teachers." I said, "Okay, but I don't know who my teachers are, so can somebody help me?" So, I did get to sit with my teachers and I bonded with them as well. So, yes, thank you so much for allowing us to go on this trip.
Well, welcome, welcome to Los Presnos, we look forward to your leadership and all of you put in a very long day today, this makes it even longer, um, thank you, please go to your families today.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Before, before you guys go and stuff, let me just say that we, Dr. Salazar briefs us on everything and so, we saw the agenda and my comment to him was, "God, please let them have some fun." So, I, I know it was serious stuff, a lot. We appreciate that and I'm glad you had fun and we're looking forward to this year and stuff. So, congratulations, thank you for the feedback. Um, I went to Tapatio Springs one time and it's very wooded and stuff, so I'm sure you were thinking, "Dr. Renteria, where in the world are they taking me?" But, yes-
Yes, there was a lot of animals while we were walking, so I was jumping.
(laugh)
I don't know, so it was neat.
But, it, it's a very beautiful place and it was very tranquil and I'm glad you guys had a great time. Good work, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Alrighty, moving right along, so now, we didn't have anybody, uh, for public audience and we didn't have anyone for public comment. Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Uh, moving on to district reports, Roman numeral eight.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we present the monthly reports. Uh, we entertain any questions that, uh, you might have at this, under item one, under reports.
Any questions from the board?
If not, uh, we have item number two, property values, current year and versus prior years. This, uh, we are required to present this to the board, uh, by law. We have, we covered it in a recent budget committee meeting, we spent, uh, we actually did a pretty good deep dive of our own on this topic, um, and today we presented this as a report. Mr. Basaldua, anything that you would want to add?
Uh, the only thing to add is I did, I did participate in, uh, in Region One Tax Workshop today where they were discussing this topic and at the end of the day, you know, the appraised values that we did see of the six point seven, again, in comparison to everything across the state, you know, every single region in the state saw an increase. And where, it was an average of eighteen percent statewide. So, I mean, only to reflect that, you know, we are, you know, again, not necessarily where we want to be in regards to our appraised values, but again, we're in the same boat as everybody else in the state. I mean, they really did that analysis, they shared that information to where they, they were showing that, yes, there's a compression statewide and it's also because of this, you know, again, because of the, the increased taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Basaldua. Um, if there aren't any other questions on item two under reports, items three and four are presented for your information, employee handbook and student handbook, we're on a pin drive that we provided, uh, you with. We know it's a lot of information, but a lot of it is cosmetic, we're just clean up and keeping up with trends in, in, uh, attire. Uh, but we, we stayed consistent with, uh, respecting gender and, um, and other areas that make this, that allow us to provide an environment in which all students can flourish. These are all the reports we have, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Salazar. So, we're gonna move on to Roman numeral nine, consent agenda, there is fifteen items on consent agenda. Do I have a motion, uh, Mr. Armaya?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve consent agenda as posted, all fifteen items.
I have a, a first, uh, by Mr. Armaya, do I have a second? Mr. Castillo, first and second, all those in favor of consent agenda, one through fifteen, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. We go on to Roman numeral ten, action items. Number one, discuss and take action to renew agreements, contracts for casualty insurance with various insurance carriers, Shepherd Walton King agent, do I have a motion? Mr. Armaya?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve, uh, to renew the agreement contracts with casualty insurance with various, uh, insurance carriers, Shepherd, Shepherd Walton King.
Do I have a second? Mr. Henderson?
We have a first and a second, any discussion?
There being no discussion, a first and a second, uh, to discuss and to, to take action, to renew, uh, agreements or contracts for casualty insurance with various insurance carrier, Shepherd Walton King, all those in agent. All those in favor, raise your hand. It is unanimous and passes. Number two, discuss and take action to approve agreements, contracts for CSP number twenty-two dash twenty-three dash fourteen, CNS kitchen equipment, do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Uh, Mrs. Quintero, have a first and a second, um, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, we have a first and a second, to take action to approve agreements or contracts for CSP twenty-two dash twenty-three dash fourteen, CNS kitchen equipment, all those in favor, raise your hand. It is unanimous, it passes. Number three, discuss and take action to endorse Sylvia Sanchez Garza, PhD, to fill a position on the Tasby Board of Directors, Region One, Position B, do I have a motion? Mr. Armaya?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, endorse Sanchez Garza, uh, to fill a position, actually she is already in that position on the Tasby Board of Directors for Region One, Position B.
Thank you, do I have a second? Mr. Quintero, we have a first and a second, any discussion? Yes, Mr. Armaya?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify things, the, the, um, the way Tasby does things is, is, uh, I'm not gonna say not normal, but it's certainly not anything that I had been aware of. Uh, in order to get on this, to fill this position and, and Dr. Sanchez is the, uh, the incumbent, you have to, there, there's several layers of it and the first one is the endorsement. Uh, you have to get thirty, it, it, uh, at least fifty percent of the total members within the district, districts, uh, districts within the region, and I believe there's thirty-four, thirty-five, I'm not sure exactly now, but she would have to get, uh, it's thirty-four, she would have to get seventeen or eighteen endorsements. It's not anticipated that she will get that, it's very seldom for that, happens because many school districts do not endorse. In fact, at times, there's been years when we don't endorse. Uh, we've gotten, uh, more consistent about it lately, but she is already on the board. Even with that, both of these individuals, because she does have an opponent, opponent, will be interviewed by the nominations committee from Tasby and that committee will make a recommendation to the delegate, to the delegation at the delegate assembly. And even from there, even if the nomination committee does, whoever they pick, they can be challenged from the floor and then it will go to a vote on the delegate assembly. So, there's several layers of it, this is just the first one.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Armaya, for that clarification. Any other questions? Alright, so we had a first and second, all those in favor of the endorsement of Sylvia Sanchez Garza, PhD, to fill a position on the Tasby Board of Directors for Region One, Position B, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Number four, discuss and take action to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. A, teachers, B, counselor, C, diagnostician, D, assistant principal, and E, executive director. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo? Do I have a second? Mr. Armaya? Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving the superintendent's personal, uh, personnel recommendations for the following positions, uh, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, A through E, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. There is no need for us to go into closed session or open session? Anybody here? Oh, we do, we have one, yay, thank you so much for coming! Yes?
Anavya Al is a seasoned administrator, former, uh, she's currently coordinator for special sub, for special pops, um, but served as a director of special services for some time and, uh, was just approved as executive director. Congratulations.
Thank you for being here, ma'am, congratulations. Thanks, Mr. Castillo, for the reminder. So, uh, we move on to announcements.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, this week, August eighth through, Thursday, August eleventh, is teacher professional learning, uh, this is all, all four days of professional learning. Um, we do want to remind you that convocation is on this Thursday evening. So, we'll work a bit of a split schedule on Thursday, allow staff to go home, get ready to come back for convocation. Uh, we've got a, a great keynote speaker, uh, don't want to miss that. Teacher preparation day is Friday, August the twelfth and, uh, for the first day of class for students, uh, and the first day of the marking period is Monday, August fifteenth. We have special called meeting to set a tax rate and adopt a budget, uh, here, uh, on Monday, August twenty-second. We'll start promptly at six PM. We should have students, uh, help lead us, we'll have students back in this room. Tuesday, August the ninth, we have, uh, a couple of home games, uh, volleyball games for, uh, five-thirty against PSA and seven PM against Sherland, uh, these are non-district games. And Friday, August the twelfth, it's, uh, our first football scrimmage and that is away. I don't have the location of that football game, but I'll put that in my weekly update. And, um, do you have something, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I, I was gonna ask the chair if I could just say a few words. I, I wanted to thank you, number one, for, for allowing me to serve on the Tasby Board. It is just, uh, uh, we, we've mentioned it before, we're kinda isolated down here and insulated and, and sometimes we don't, uh, realize what's going on in the rest of the state. There's gonna be a lot of new items on the, on the Tasby website that are, that are help us. I don't think things have gotten to us, uh, as much as they have. We're losing a lot of school boards where people are putting up, people with money are putting up half a million dollars to, to fight and to promote a school board member and knock someone else out there. It's not, it's just unbelievable the amount of money in, in the Dallas and the Houston area that's being put up, uh, to change school boards and there's a big fight. There's gonna, and it's, you'll see a lot of ways and talking points on our advocacy agenda and what we can do and what we need to do. And I, I think it, since we are isolated down here, sometimes we don't get in, involved because we don't feel the attack, but the attack is real against public schools and, and, uh, we're, we're gonna have to be united in what we say and, and make, not just like me that just says blurbs at times, but actually be some kinda coherent, uh, statement where, where we can tell people what's going on. Because a lot of the things is that the, people are, are pointing out lies and other people believe them because they, we don't do a good enough job of, of really saying what's going on in public schools. So, there's gonna be a lot of things on the website and a lot of education on the website that's gonna be good for, for anybody that, that's a supporter of public education. Uh, and, and on another topic, I want to congratulate you on, and your staff and your administrators on, on what y'all accomplished at Bernie. I think that Scott, that retreat must have been something special. Now, not everybody want, and that, and I, and I mean that, because I'm gonna say something right now that you're gonna think, "Well, eh, people, we're, we're, we are videotaping this" and, and some people, I'm sure some people get excited about watching us, uh, do this, but I'm sure some of them are not educators. So, you might want to explain what an after-school pickup line is to someone who is not an educator, because they're, they're gonna be, "I heard it, they're talking about it," and I said, "Well, someone better explain that" because the, the people are not. Could you please explain it to non-elementary educators, what, an after-school pickup line?
After-school pickup line is a service that we provide for parents. They pull up at curbside and we open doors and put kids in the vehicle. They appreciate it very much and it's an opportunity for us to say, "Thank you for sharing your children with us." That is the after-school pickup line.
Thank you for the clarifications, Mr. Henderson.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add a note on what, uh, Mr. Armaya said. Uh, getting the message out, we sat in, we sat in several meetings and workshops on, uh, again, working on securing our schools for our children, for our teachers. I had the privilege of attending, uh, Rotary event on Thursday where we had Mr. McDonough, uh, gave a presentation that he'd given to our board, uh, and his staff, and it was outstanding, phenomenal. And I know that there were approximately thirty people, uh, present in the room. There were children there also for, uh, a presentation we had and I know it resonated with everyone, I heard good comments. So, thank you, Mr. McDonough, for getting that message out, that the school district is aware of the situation and you communicated very well.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson, and I'm gonna echo that because my daughter Kayla came back and said the very same thing. So, heck of a presentation, lot of work, I know it's a huge task. And so, we're all behind you and, and security and ensuring that our schools are safe and doing what we need to do as a board to make sure that that happens. So, thank you, team, for everything that you guys do. With that, one more.
One more, I recently told you that, uh, a member of cabinet, uh, successfully defended her dissertation. Um, this Saturday, uh, Dr. Stumball, uh, walked the line at College Station. Can you help me congratulate Dr. Stumball? We'll recognize her with staff later. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Alright, with that, it's seven oh five, I adjourn the meeting.